It is 5:30. If you can call June 24, Amherst Board of Education meeting to order. I stand for the pleasure of the ladies. The ladies and gentlemen.
Do you agree with all of the provisions?
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Call the board please.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
Mrs. Gillis. Your Mr. Hamels absent. Dr. Nestor.
Present.
Mrs. Morgan. Morgan Watson. I get the floor reading.
You're special.
A recommendation to adopt the agenda as presented, including any and all agenda. Any discussion?
That one item was changed.
Okay, I will that separate.
Okay.
Any more? Call the board please.
Mrs. Gillis, hi. Mrs. Fox, hi. Dr. Mr. Zappa.
Here to the public, we have one. I can't read that.
Robert Baldruck.
Stand up and give your name and address, please.
Uh, Robert Baldruck, 120 Fall Lake Lane.
Go ahead.
Alright, um, I'll make this real quick. Uh, years back, I worked for a company where with good intentions, they decided that we all had a few too many pounds on us. And they decided that to help combat that, they were going to remove any sugary drinks from vending machines, cafeterias, et cetera. Um, I drink unsweetened tea. It's a leaf and water. It's about as diet as you can get. Uh, but they removed it from the vending machines because it didn't have the word diet on it. Um, I share that story because it's a good example of unintended consequences. Uh, when we mean to do something with the best of intentions, sometimes it, we can cast our net too far and catch a little bit too much. Uh, recently, our state legislature and our governor has asked that this group uh, review the electronic devices policies for the schools. Cell phones, uh, PDAs, et cetera. Um, beautiful thing. Their goal is to remove screen time, to get rid of things like TikTok and Facebook that are taking up our children's time and has ripe for abuse. And I think that's a great thing. What my concern is though, uh, my daughter wears a watch that has no calculator, no phone, no pictures, no nothing. It has three things it can do. It can tell the time. It can allow me to track her and see where she's at with GPS. And it has an emergency button that she can press and through a cell signal, dial an emergency call. Um, we all know bad things can happen. Uh, there was a case a few years ago, out of state. Young lady in junior high was cornered in the bathroom and bad things happened. Um, it's a great comfort to me as a father, knowing that she has this tool available to her. As I'm watching other school districts adopt their policies, I'm seeing it go both ways. Some school districts use the term internet devices or smart devices. Other ones use the term cellular devices. Cellular device casts a big net and catches pretty much anything that can connect to the cellular network. Um, obviously you guys do this. I'm not going to try and tell you how to do this. Uh, I just wanted to share my experience and my story with you and ask that over the next year, when you guys do get around to looking at that, revisiting it or creating your policy, maybe take the time to look at whether you're going after it with a club or going after it with precision. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks for the input and I'm sure that we will take that into consideration as we go forward. Okay, moving on, treasurer's report. You want it?
We can get Dave coming on the phone.
Is he going to be up here or on your phone?
No, he's gonna be up on the screen when Mike makes his decision. Dave has, I don't know, about eight slides that he wanted to do a recap of, the financial planning that we did, starting this last fall. Actually before that, with facilities. And then, Dave is getting on right now, passing the replacement, PI replacement levy with an additional half mill. What that enabled us, enabled us to do with a debt issuance. And Dave will be here in just a moment.
Okay, Dave, you can begin whenever you're ready.
Oh, fantastic. Well, great. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Evening.
Oh, I can hear you. Alright. I am lying past you on the, uh, on the turnpike. I gotta make a, make a meeting at seven over on, uh, in Cleveland. So I appreciate you all letting me zoom in and go over the, the, the presentation, the slideshow, slideshow with you. Um, I'm assuming, do you all have copies printed out? Is it just on the screen?
It's on the screen.
Okay, fantastic. Well, uh, uh, just wanted to kind of follow up, so, uh, uh, wrap up relative to the financing of the school facilities. And, uh, sort of, uh, as the process of doing that, I'd like to kind of give you the final, final results of all of that. So on the screen, uh, you will likely see, uh, the, the background slide, which is the second page or the first page of the slide. And usually, yeah, when I provide these, I want to make sure that there's just some clarity in it so that a year from now, or five years from now, or 10 years from now, someone, uh, if they have questions about just kind of how we got to where we got to, they've got a little bit of background. So it starts with just an overview of the board's decision to, uh, place the replacement levy, uh, with the addition on the ballot back in November and the fact that produced, uh, money for us to use to finance the school improvements that, uh, are soon to be underway. Uh, we had targeted about a million two a year for that, uh, for that revenue stream, uh, coming from the PI levy to go for that particular purpose. Uh, we, uh, we also as a board and as your advisor decided to go that way using certificates of participation, uh, which is really our only option. It really quit, uh, any other type of financing. It's been opted to go with a 30-year term primarily so that we could maximize how much we borrow from that particular revenue stream. So, um, that sort of establishes kind of the financing. I'm not sure if you guys can hear that truck blowing. But, gotta love the traffic out here. Uh, so initially, we had targeted about $17 million from the financing. Uh, they used an interest rate of five and a quarter percent. Uh, we were able to move forward and get everything ready to go for a bond or a cop sale on, uh, June the 6th. And those securities sold in the marketplace, and I'll cover that in a second really well. But starting June of next year, Amy will begin making payments on that financing. So on the next slide, uh, we, in order to get ready to, to, to do the financing, we had to put a financing team together, which we already really had. Uh, and we had the administrators from the district, that being Mike and Amy, uh, myself, Brent Brockmill, uh, the Stiefel Public Finance Group, and by Michelle Hillsborough. And the school district's bond counsel, Mike Sharp, all worked together to pull everything we needed to, uh, to get securities sold to investors. But prior to that, we also needed to get the rating, uh, through Moody's, which we were able to do. And on the next slide, I have the, uh, the information about the rating. Uh, and that was, uh, went extremely well. Really happy with that entire process. Uh, the rating, if you all remember, is really the basis for which investors make a decision of what interest rate to give us for the financing when we come to the market. So typically like our own personal credit score, the better the credit rating, the lower the interest rate. And, uh, the process of doing that requires that we, we, uh, go meet with the rating agencies, which we did. We met with this, uh, Moody's in, uh, in Chicago and sat down with them for a good two-hour period to give them some background of the school district. That included demographics and financial information, management information, uh, and economic development, uh, background on what's happening in the community. Uh, that went real well. The rating agency returned a rating of a AA3, uh, on the cops issue. And the way it works with cops is that, uh, a, a, a cops issue really doesn't have its own specific uh, rating based on the quality of the cops. It's actually a rating based on the district's overall quality. Uh, and so they always set the rating cops issues one grade below the district's overall quality rating, which is at a AA2. Uh, so the district itself, that, uh, there was no change in the outstanding rating. Uh, the district, uh, is two rating grades from a AAA, which is the highest rating that you can get. So a AA2 is a very good rating. And then having a AA3 on the cops is also really, really good from a, uh, from a market perspective in terms of the interest rates that we're able to get. Uh, the rating agency cited a number of things that they like about district. Uh, they like our current financial condition. It's, uh, the strongest it's been in a long time. They did have some comments, uh, on a forward-looking basis, you know, concerns about, uh, what happens if those reserves start to come down over time. But I think we really handled that well. Uh, the stable enrollment at the school district. Uh, there was other positive financial implications related to the schools, school, uh, reaching the 20 mil floor and overall economic development growth in the, in the community. Uh, and then also the, uh, overall management of the district, uh, is, from their perspective and mine, uh, very, very good. You guys have, uh, a top-notch fiscal officer. The board's done some good things as well relative to overall, uh, overall, uh, management of the district. But the most important thing that I want to share with you guys is that, that I, you know, I do this every day for, and have for 30-plus years. I've done hundreds of ratings. And after that meeting was over and I, I pulled, uh, Mike, Amy aside, and I told them, and I am, I mean this, Mike, with, with all my heart, that was the best job I have ever seen in a rating presentation. Uh, they did an incredible job with the rating folks, uh, and delivered. There would, there would be no other way for them to have done a better job delivering the message about Amherst to those, uh, rating folks. Uh, so the board and the community were represented extremely well. And I, I just want to make sure I go on record telling you all how amazing they were in that meeting. And you might remember, the rating analysts don't like to hear from me or the, or the, or the bond lawyer or the underwriter. Uh, that meeting is solely, was solely Mike and Amy. And, uh, and if there was, you know, a 10-point scale on this thing, they did a 15. It was that good. So I just want to make sure I express that. And, uh, the results, uh, really come in, uh, in line with that. Uh, the rating that we got, if we go to the next page, became a huge contributor to how the market responded to the securities that are selling. So, uh, on, uh, on June the 6th, we, uh, went out the market. Stiefel went out of the marketplace and they showed the world of investors, the 19, the, the, the 19 million that we were ultimately able to sell, your securities. They showed them the community of Amherst, the Amherst schools, and everything that, uh, that you stand for. And let me tell you, that was an incredible experience. And I'm sure that you guys have heard already stories from Mike and Amy about the way that whole thing came together. But I put together a list of the names of investors that actually put in orders to buy your cop, cops issue. Uh, traditionally, if you get 20, it's, you know, it's amazing. Uh, but we have, you know, we have a, I think, well, way more than 20 investors that showed up uh, to put orders in to buy your securities. Uh, the, the very next page is a screenshot of the final orders that we received. So an order is when an investor says, yes, I'd like to buy a billion of those bonds, or yes, I'd like to buy 2 million of those bonds or those cops. On that slide, you'll see where I've circled 111,037. Well, the, the last three zeros are omitted. We had orders from investors across the country for 111 million dollars to buy your cops issue, which is astonishing. I mean, absolutely astonishing. Because we had so much demand, we were able to lower the interest rate even more during the marketing process and end up with the ability for us to, uh, increase the amount we were borrowing from 17 billion to basically 19 million. So that, that investor demand drove the ability for us to create more money go towards your project. Uh, so I haven't seen too many, uh, sales go this well, but this one went incredibly well. And it's really a testament to, uh, how investors perceive the school district, how investors perceive the financial management of this, of the school district and the, uh, the, the overall, uh, stability that you guys present from an investment perspective. So I, you know, I think it was just a fantastic outcome altogether. Um, the final, uh, oh, sorry. Where's my final interest rate on here? Did I hit the final interest rate on there? Did I miss it?
Few, few slides to go back.
We're, um, so on the summary page, there we go. Look, uh, let's skip to the, uh, the, uh, the, the, the investor demand, uh, where the interest rate is. Because of that, uh, that demand, the final interest rate ended up being at 4.51%. And you all remember, we were estimating well above 5% went into, uh, the whole, uh, the whole process back in November of last year. So the, uh, the outcome was really good. We also, I want to point out, I hit the market at a, at a good time as well. And Amy planned this from day one. Uh, she knew that if we could get in the market before the end of the school year, it would be a good time. And, uh, you know, and we were able to. Uh, we, we got the, got in the market, but the day we were in the market, interest rates were coming down and in our favor. Uh, and that also led us capitalize on some good, uh, good fortune at the moment. So, uh, overall, I don't think that this could have come together any better than it did. So I'm, uh, I'm really, really happy about the outcome. Now, on the summary page, uh, going back at one page, uh, from my perspective, I think we've met, uh, all of our financial goals in this process. Uh, getting the transaction wrapped up and closed when we will will also let us maximize how much interest we're going to earn. And, and that's going to be important relative to, uh, dealing with the project as we go forward. Uh, clearly, we've been, minimized the interest costs by getting a, a great rating and, uh, getting in the market at the right time. And, and most port, you know, most importantly, I think that for anyone on the outside looking at what you all did relative to this transaction, uh, the Amherst was clearly represented by a fantastic group, you know, and, uh, just a good team overall. So I just wanted to express to you guys that it couldn't have been gone any better. A great outcome and now you guys can look forward to moving forward with your project. So I'll stop there and entertain any questions if I can create guys.
Thank you, Dave. We'll see if the board has any questions now. We appreciate your time in the car and also your presentation. So any questions from the board?
That's great. So, thank you.
Yeah, no questions, Dave. You explained it very well.
Alright. Very good. Well, you all have a good evening and, uh, I'm sure I'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
I would like to just say on behalf of the board, um, to you, Amy, Mike, Dave, the rest of the team, your job well done. As I say, going forward, I know we had some concerns with the amount of funding we were going to get with interest rates and everything that goes into that. But obviously looking at this, um, it seems like they've said it in our favor. So again, well done. Appreciate all your work.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, I don't belabor anything else that Dave said. I hope you were able to hear everything. Um, he went through the pricing recap. Issue amount was 19.1 million. Um, the closing documents, the federal tax documents have been signed, um, by me and sometimes Mike and sometimes Mark have notedized wherever they need to be. And, um, the hurrying down to Squire, that bogged claim must last Friday. And then the proceeds will settle June 27th. So just a disclaimer that Dave thinks that I chose a fabulous day to price the cops issue. It really wasn't bad, except that I wanted the funds to settle before the end of the fiscal year. You know, I'll take my turban off and my, you know, my crystal ball and everything. Um, I just wanted it all to settle before the end of the fiscal year. So we do have some financial transactions to do, both to record the issuance costs and to record the proceeds of the, the, um, debt issuance, but also things that we weren't paid, how the PI need to be moved over and to reimburse ourselves from the proceeds and all of that. So, um, you can go on, Mike. Um, just wanted to let you all know, you do see, I believe, some business recommendations, participation agreement for SOURSA, just to re- remind you all. That is Schools of Ohio Risk Sharing Security. It is an insurance consortium for school districts. About a third of the districts in the state, um, participate in SOURSA. And again, it's a, it's a sharing the risk type of, type of setup, very much like we have for health, dental, and vision insurance with LERC. Um, just wanted to let you know, uh, SOURSA, all of the insurance premiums were 166,000 last year and it's going up to 183,000. Um, commercial auto didn't seem to change a whole lot. There was an initial crime. I will see, of course, the market values of, of our assets, our buildings and everything have increased. That's another thing that inflation impacts our values, really due to replacement costs. Um, we received two other quotes. Um, I work also with Todd Associates, uh, Cleveland. They are, they are in our schools council for vendor. Um, they also represent other insurance companies. Liberty Mutual came in at 215,000, 291,000. Unifa came in, um, around 250. Um, that association just didn't even send me that entire quote because they knew that it was out of the, out of the running. Um, but just, these are our commercial liability, I'm sorry, our, um, our property and casualty, commercial audio and liability that made up these. It, within there are crime policies and cybersecurity policies. But again, it's quite a decrease from 166 to 183. And there's not a lot that I can give about that. We can continue to have good, uh, we've had a number of claims in the last five, six years. Um, pretty substantial claims. I always had the water issue and we had the roof issue here, 100, April 1st of 2023. Um, so we, we had fewer, um, bus incidents. So that's a good thing. Um, each year we go down, um, we eliminate, um, we eliminate some of the deductible. That's like the management deductible thing you hear on television. We can go on that. Just wanted to recap, county auditor state award. We did receive the certificate, but we also received confirmation from the Ohio Senate, from Senator Manning. And then, um, another, um, accounting or finance topic are fiscal audits for fiscal '24 through fiscal '28. So this year through fiscal '28, auditor of state gave us up and, um, they sent us out for an IPA bundle, I believe. Midview and Land Center are in our bundle. And the new independent public account will be duly approved. I've worked with them. It's, it's a strong IPA. Will be viable. So just wanted to let you all know that auditor of state is not our financial auditor and has not issued that. Brain Associates is still how we're getting prepared. They promote the financial statements. I'll move on to my recommendations.
Sure.
So, uh, we have the board minutes from the, uh, May 20th regular board meeting. Uh, the next item are the May 2024 financials. Exhibit 7E through 70. And I can go through those because it's the same ones you always receive. Um, exhibit 7E, um, are the fiscal '24 appropriations changes that I need to make this month, uh, for this year. Um, so those are exhibit 7E. 7F, uh, are two views of the temporary appropriations for fiscal '25. There's a summary view that I actually have to certify and send to the county auditor. And the detailed view, obviously that helps we develop the summary beats those individual lines, beating the summary lines on the face page. So that's exhibit 7F. And then 7G, um, we have advances. And, um, I was hoping that we wouldn't have advances, but we had some recent, as we saw in 7E, some of the reasons why we have appropriations changes is because the Ohio Department of Education workforce made really, really late year allocation changes. So they were additions to our allocations for years, so that's a good thing. But, um, we of course have to reflect those in our appropriations within our financial system. Um, same thing happened. Um, I have, it, because of the greater allocation from state, I was able to lose some expenditures into those grants. And, you know, I've, I've already done the final cash requests for the year. Um, so we cannot end fiscal year with a negative cash balance. You guys can put that in there. So, um, the advances, um, the two that are estimates are Fund 507, that's our PESR, that's PESR 3. Um, and then the title one is 572 fund. Um, the other amounts are exact, the 584, which is the Title 4A fund, and the Title 2A fund, 13,828. Next page. There, I believe, we were, ended up pre-ben and now invoices. Something that you don't see every day is a resolution to approve a new fund. I don't understand why we have to ask the board to approve creation of a new fund because the auditor of state tells us what funds we can use. But going through the requisite process, requesting the board to establish the fund, establish an appropriation within that fund. And just so that you know, that 014 fund is its internal road, and its internal service road refund, which means the revenue generated in that fund funds the expenditures in that. So all of the transactions are within the 014 fund. And that is going to be a comic corner fund. Alright? So all revenues will accrue to that fund and all expenditures will be recorded as such. And then the final item in my section are donations for June.
Second. Any questions? Comments?
I did notice something. I need to say about Harris. Oh, I know it was like, oh, like a hundred dollar company for Harris Cyclops. They don't have Harris anymore. So I just asked her a lot and she said she'd take care of that one. It's a great one. I wish you would have. Nobody think that was there? Who gave you that?
I, I appreciate somebody noticing, but it was there. Um, and we, we've already spoke about the auditor of state a couple of times. Um, not to malign them or anything like that, but there are certain things that are so prescriptive and, you know, um, the, everything is identified in the law. The higher vice code is not easy to understand or read. Um, and then is that a fund that is appropriate to transfer going to another fund? So that is further, I need further guidance on whether that is permissible or not. So, not to put you off, but that's definitely now to June 24th.
Kind of all just that there are individuals who can't be involved.
Same with the newer library fund I was asking.
They, I've done some, the Warren Library Fund, we could spend that. Warren's still a school. We could write a purpose and goal statement for that fund and, and get it spent. That's a little bit different. There's no way. Cause there's a, so, alright.
I, I didn't have a chance to, like, ask any questions beforehand, but, um, on your check request, um, there's one here, and you might not know the topic and be doing this, okay? What for Southwest Air?
Yeah, that's Mike sending my trip to Chicago for Moody's rating.
Was that just for airfare? 3,000?
Yeah. I'm gonna check that. I'll let you know.
There's a couple of them. I'll just ask you later. It's okay.
I can't think of anybody else.
Well, because, well, could you, we didn't, we didn't, can't, we had a trip scheduled and, uh, tickets earlier on the week, I remember the schedule. So it's possible that bill, both sets of tickets and then.
Yes. Yeah. I just do want to hear.
I was just gonna ask that question as a part of that.
Yeah.
It's okay. We can talk on. I, I totally trust you. It's not that, don't just like, that stuck out to me and said, why? Okay. Just going on a trip, there's no way I should be. But okay, just going on trip. There's no way I should be though. Yeah, that's kind of my mistake.
Okay.
Can you vote?
Yes. This is good. Hi. That's the Blackwell, Dr. Messer.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah, from our part, I'm gonna turn over to some guests that we have today. As you know, we are still, still hiring seats. We're still interviewing a few positions. But we have a few guests with us this evening that you faces the difference. It's wonderful people. So I'm gonna turn it over to David Delly. Do you wanna come up, Dave? And kind of share who came to visit us this evening and say hello and introduce some new staff.
Excited to hear of the board, some recent hires that we had, just in the past couple of weeks or so. A number of them were able to join us today. So we'll start with the back corner. So we have Olivia Diviacio. So Olivia comes to us after teaching first grade at Avon East Elementary this past year. She has her master's in education from John Carroll University. And she's also a head coach at Orange Theory Fitness. She lives Lakewood currently. And she's here tonight with her boyfriend, Matt Campbell.
So we're on track. So we're gonna go out to the. If you have recommendations.
Yeah, they're looking for food recommendations. He said ziggy. We also have, not an attendance today, but Matt Johnson, just to announce that. He's gonna be the new PE teacher at Powers. He is a military veteran after serving with the Ohio National Guard for eight years. Started his career in education after that. And has most recently served in a PE teacher role at both Lorraine Hawthorne and also Blackcomb. He's joining us. JB Hall, since two thousand and fourteen, she has taught in Lorraine City Schools in third grade. She'll also be at Powers teaching third grade next year. She has both her undergrad and her masters from the University of. Her undergrad from the University of Akron and masters from Walden University. Her family, Michael, her husband Nora, Ella and Luna, they live in Lurie. And KJH, wanna introduce Roger?
We have Roger Bilske. He comes from Bay. And he's been in the custodian business there at Bay for a good while. We're excited to have Roger coming. Head custodian is sort of a unique role. It's basically the team leader and first thing, he's first, first stop in the morning. That's head custodian's job is to check out everything, make sure that the buildings are up to snuff and safe for the kids to come in. And had the same head custodian at HJ since it was built. And so we, so we've had some retirements and so we're excited to have a fresh, younger, young gentleman to run our HJ and it's, we're just really happy to. Roger's and his wife Emma, right? And has a young son Ezekiel. Yep, Ezekiel. Yeah, so Roger's, Roger's starting July eighth. He wanted to start July first and he hasn't had a vacation for about thirteen years. So I told him, I said, you take your wife and baby on vacation and start the eighth. So that's what, so we're happy to give him going on the eighth. And so we'll, hopefully we'll see some new changes at the junior high.
I'll turn it over to Joe to introduce.
John Darko. Yes, thank you, board. Been very busy at Steel and we had one teacher who put in their resignation late. So John Darko comes to us. He's a resident of Amherst, has children here. Has been driving from Seneca. Hour each way. Hour each way. So two hours a, a day in the car. So we are very excited to have him. He comes with a wealth of knowledge, twenty years' experience. And sometimes newer teachers, they come in, we'll just let you get your feet wet, whatever, for the first year. Not John, he is coming in. A few years ago, we had a teacher who could teach anatomy physiology at the college level. And then when they retired, we weren't able to do that. Well, John has been teaching that course through Findlay. He's been working already with LCC. He's gonna be able to bring that program back to our science program. And he's also been doing AP Physics. So he's gonna be very busy.
And he's got a lot of time.
Yeah, I have more free time out. So. Yeah, two, two hours more every day. And it was just a joy. We, we knew, we had interviewed him earlier and we just knew. And hang on, hang on, we, we, we watched it really good. And you know, his conversation when we had him, it was all about putting students first and things that we wanted here. I mean, he comes with a wealth of knowledge, but he comes with a love of children too. So we're great to answer that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, again, thank you all for being here tonight. I'm sure you have some things you want to do, like go have dinner and check out Amherst a little bit. Johnny will take a five minute ride home from. So at this time, you know, we're, we're going through our next part of port, but our guest, if you'd like to leave, you're more than welcome to leave. It's a perfect time. So thank you for coming. If you wanted to just head out, you're more than welcome to stay as well. I wanna see some more action, but if you'd like to leave, I just thank you for being here. We look forward to next school year. Love having you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, you can start your vacation house. You can start your vacation house.
Have a good vacation tomorrow.
Alright, for the next, the next part of my report, I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan DeMay. The board requested that we have an outside, we'll come in and take a look at our field, some of these athletic projects we're gonna do. So Ryan was a field source. We interacted with Ryan to, to a feasibility study. So I think Ryan finished the feasibility study actually a month early.
What?
Yeah, the original, the original timeframe was from beginning of June, pretty much to the end of July. We're like, we kinda need this to go as fast as possible. And so Ryan and his team came up and did a wonderful job and we're, pleasure working with him. So it's just wonderful he could be here today. Actually threw him up today from funness.
Yeah.
Pretty much. Also, kinda just finished the port probably today.
It was last, it was last night of the weekend. So.
No, I mean, and it wasn't rushed. So.
No, it wasn't rushed, but you appreciate the effort and doing them for us. We appreciate it.
Well, I'll start off with this, is that it was very, I wouldn't say it's easy, but it was very simple because you know, there's a lot of talk earlier with bond sale about how big this group is and. No smoke, I promise you, and true and convicted that we work with about ninety to ninety-five different districts around Ohio, Pennsylvania, West Virginia. And I would say that this is in the top two or three percent as far as just people, quality of people, attention to detail, knowing what they want, being able to articulate what they want. That's a very difficult thing for us to get through sometimes with these. And that's why we always kinda give ourselves that runway to get that out. But I think everybody here is very thoughtful, very articulate. And it was just a really good conversation, helped us get, you know, a lot of information very, very quickly. So you know, from our point of view, Field Source, we're a company based in Columbus. We work hand in hand with a lot of architecture and engineering firms, GPG being one of them. And so Mike and his team asked us to kinda come along and sort of provide some a little bit more input on the stadium project, how that fits into the larger scope, what's gonna go on here with some of the athletic improvements. So I'll kinda take away a little bit about sort of our methodology, some of the educational process behind, you know, fields and choices. Alright, that's fine. I'll drive it. Alright, so you know, from that standpoint, again, education piece, and also we'll talk more about specifically here at Amherst, like what that looks like, both on the numbers side, and we'll talk about some of the quality side stuff too. Alright, so there it is, Tom Stadium in its current form. This is taken just a couple of weeks ago when we were here. I wanted to get some good, these will be great before shots, right? That you can use in the marketing materials and things like that. But you know, a, a very representative stadium of something that was built, you know, fifty or so years ago. And was built with a lot of hard work, a lot of heart, you know, and it's now kind of refreshed. So when we look at fields and situations like this, you know, we try to look at, you know, first the stadium build. Obviously, there's a lot of activity that occurred in the stadium, you know, spring, summer involved. And general consensus of what we heard, you know, from all the groups that we talked to, you know, internally with schools, that it's great, but there could be so much more. You know, that was really the overarching message that we heard. And so we tried to get that out of each of the different groups that we talked to. And you know, our effort to bring everybody together was, you know, the four main constituencies that we see in any school community are the maintenance folks, right, the people who put it together and sort of put it out there for everybody to see, right? We've got the programmers, the athletic side that have to try and get all these disparate groups that really wanna get on that field, use it as much as possible, but have to, you know, usually fend people off. Then you've got the administration, right, that has to handle, you know, finances and the politics and everything that goes along with, you know, whether it be a project or just general use and things like that in the community. And then finally, we have the community athletics folks that came in. It's a very wide rated group. It's, I wouldn't say it's different than other places, but I think it's a much more broad and diverse group than we see in a lot of towns this size. Okay? So back up for a second, just in terms of athletic fields, right? There's three key priorities, no matter what surface we have. And I think that was the question that we brought in. The answer most pointedly was, you know, should we put in synthetic turf or should we put in natural grass? And regardless of whatever that answer is, right? These three key priorities are absolutely critical, right? Number one is safety, right? Anything that's gonna affect that for an athlete to go out there and be safe, and even if it's just passive use from PE class or whatever. Playability, right? If the field doesn't play very well, regardless of whether it's synthetic or natural, right? How is an athlete gonna not think about it? Just make that stop, decelerate, accelerate, whatever the case might be. And then finally, aesthetics, everyone wants to go out there Friday night to see a really nice field, right? And so those three caveats and keys are sort of at the center of what we always do. Now, when we get down to the brass tacks of how do we make that all happen, right? How do we bring this together? This is kind of a visualization that we created here several years ago to help all these different groups that I just talked about, you know, maintenance, athletics, administration, community, understand how we put this together to actually make that, right? So there's these three interconnected circles here in this Venn diagram. We've got expectations, usage and maintenance, right? Those things all come together. And this big white spot, this triangle that you see here in the center is UX. In the software and startup world, that means user experience, right? So if all this comes together, if we have the right expectations, the right amount of usage and the right maintenance, that's gonna create a perfect, ideally, user experience. Okay? A lot of times what we see, and this is no different here, what we see is that, you know, maybe expectations aren't very clear. Maybe usage is growing to a point that maintenance can't support it. And what isn't happening is if any of these circles, if you wanna think of them as growing or deflating in size, makes this whole thing kinda wanna wobble and tip over. Okay? So what we see here in Amherst is that we've got a field that we'd sure like to use more, right? So our usage bubble has kinda shrunk down a little bit. So that's making the same lean a little bit. Our expectations, I think, have grown from what we've heard over the years of what the stadium has been, what, when it is now, we want it to be, right? Those expectations, that bubble is growing, right? Okay, and from a maintenance perspective, it really warmed my heart. I'm a maintenance person. Art of thought kinda came up and then got to administration and now to consulting. But it warmed my heart to hear Chuck and his team talk about the level of care and pride that they put into taking care of the field right now. Okay? So I knew that that was gonna be an issue, but then the thing that's really underpinning all this and that fulcrum that you'll see, there's design and infrastructure. So basically what that means is that the field is built right now, cannot support the expectations that we have and can't support the usage that we have. And the maintenance takes a lot to kinda work within that, right? And underpin all that stuff with design and infrastructure. Okay? So we've got this big question and answer, right? Should we use synthetic turf? Should we use natural grass? So it'd be easy to flip a coin. It would be easy to just say, I like the way that synthetic turf looks. I like the smell of fresh natural grass. Those are all great things, right? Those are characteristics, your attributes, but they aren't getting us towards choice. Okay? So what we do from a consulting perspective is look at it, okay? We can break this down from a quantitative perspective and a qualitative perspective. And really all that is, right, is data that we can quantify, right? Numbers on that quantitative side. Qualitative data is just things that are going to add value, but maybe we can't put a price to that, right? Or maybe it's something that we feel intrinsically as individuals, as a community, as an athletic department, at school, whatever, that we want to go ahead and reach for that goal. Okay? So some things, ways that we break this down from a qualitative and quantitative standpoint. And we're evaluating this, right, going into communities. And we do probably about forty or so of these a year throughout most of the Midwest, but throughout the entire country. It's nice to have one that's only two hours away, actually. So on the quantitative side, things that we look at, right, are life cycle of the field. We look at total cost of ownership. We look at hours of use and we look at safety. Okay, those are things that we can quantify. Certainly, that's not the total and complete list, but it's ones that are most important, generally speaking, especially in a high school. Okay? Qualitative, right? So versatility of use, like what else can we use it for besides just have football lines up there, for example? Budget plan, right? So we wanna have some kind of reasonable expectation of what we're gonna do from a capital and operating perspective, so that the administrative side of things, right, has some clear expectations of what they need to be able to be supporting. Field playability. Certain athletes have certain preferences. You know, not gonna say that this is the case here, but you know, soccer players like to play on grass, right? Football players go either way. So there's just things like that, that within each community, each system, it makes a difference one way or the other, or maybe it don't. Finally, maintenance resources, right? So these are things that we can put in a context from a qualitative standpoint. All of this, though, on both sides, comes down to community support. And so we see a lot of these situations where, you know, these things are measured and valued, right? We can measure the quantification. We can value what the qualitative side is, but we can't do any of that community support, right? We have to understand what the community wants and how they wanna perceive it. Okay? So let's kinda get this apart from a qualitative standpoint, real quick, just from a life cycle planning standpoint. You know, synthetic turf, properly built field, ten years with regular maintenance, meaning that we're trying to do a reasonably good job of keeping up with it at the minimum level. If we're being diligent, then we should get up to twelve years of that. So from a life cycle planning standpoint, that's where we should be as far as replacements. Natural grass is a little bit longer and that's because we can regenerate, right? We can regrow grass every year, right? So that synthetic turf is kinda like the new car that you buy. It depreciates a little bit every year. There's really not a whole lot you can do. You can keep it nice and regular maintenance, but eventually it will wear out. Natural grass is not quite the same thing. So we still have a life cycle, right? There's still a time that we have to change. Okay? So quantitative, so this is, we have all these different scenarios built out for these. Baseball fields, receding fields, football specific stadiums, all this. And it's really to understand what the usage could be on these fields. We're looking at a much broader data set, right? And we've had a really good, robust conversation with Amy and Mike as we went through this on the finance side, just to really hone in on, you know, if you wanna know the true number, what is it gonna cost us to actually own these surfaces, right? We need to know. And so we look at this as really those two different sides, right? We've got the capital side and we've got the operating side. Okay? Initial installation cost, initial equipment purchases, the things that we don't have in the, in the barn right now to take care of what we are gonna put in, right? Our capital reserve, the surface replacement, as we said, they all have a life cycle, right? We need a plan now for what we're going to need in the future for places. And then capital equipment replacement. So the specialized equipment that we use to take care of the fields, it wears out at some point too. We've gotta be able to take care of that too. On the operating side, we've got labor, supplies, contract services, and then long-term maintenance. So things that maybe don't come up every year, right? But we will have the budget for every two or three years, right, to maintain these services. Things that don't have a time cycle of every week, every month, every, you know, six months, something like that. And again, going down to the bottom here, community support, right? We have to buy it because these are taxpayer dollars. We need to understand where all this is coming from, where it's going to. Alright, so this is actually for comp stadium. So we took the input that we had from Chuck and his team about the maintenance equipment that's out there, the way that they currently take care of the field and try to look at, okay, from a dollars and cents standpoint, just pure numbers, where is everything stacked up? Okay? And what's interesting is that, you know, in virtually every case, this is the way it breaks out. The, you know, there is a delta between natural grass and synthetic. Now, I would say that this is probably a little bit lower than average. There's a lot of things that are working in your favor in terms of the team that you currently have from a maintenance perspective, take care of it the right way. I think that this is also, and I'm not saying, I know that this is built out over a ten-year horizon too. So basically, if you're able to take care of this really well, stretch it out to twelve years, that's sixty-five thousand, a hundred and seventy-nine dollars every year that you're banking towards that, right, from the capital reserve perspective. So the easy thing to say is that, well, hey, why would we spend sixty-five thousand dollars, you know, a year more to have synthetic turf? And it doesn't make any sense. Well, this is where the quantitative, the qualitative side comes in, right? Because there's other things, right, that are more important, seeing, you know, solely money, right, that we need to look at as far as what is the use that we can use it for outside of football? For instance, you know, if we were in a rural district and we had ten football games a year, right? Couple of track meets and maybe some community events and some PE. If I look at that and say, hey, we need to improve the cost of sixty-five thousand dollars, can we do it, right, in terms of outside? can we do it, right, in terms of outside use or other school teams that might use it? The answer would be no, unequivocally no. Now, we'll talk about here in a few minutes about the use here, and how this is a little bit different in Amherst specifically, okay? So one other thing here with quantitative is safety, right? Many different metrics that we use in athletic fields for safety, and a lot of times you'll hear this brought up on both sides, right? Everybody's heard stuff about the NFL, synthetic turf, natural grass, and that whole debate. What's interesting is that, no matter what we choose, right, we can quantify that safety level, right? Set a standard, set a baseline, monitor and manage that through the lifespan of that field regardless of what it is, right? And there's a ton of new research, this graphic on the left here is synthetic turf research out of University of Tennessee, and on the right, this is natural grass research that's out of University of Georgia, okay? Looking at specifically the surface hardness, and what's interesting about both surfaces, regardless, right, is that the surface hardness on the right, the grass illustrates this best, is that variability within the field is actually what causes more injuries. It's not necessarily the surface that, hey, because you have synthetic turf, because you have natural grass, somebody got hurt. It's usually these edges, right, these margins between the tan squares and the red squares, or the tan squares and the blue squares. When I go from a soft spot to a normal spot, or I go from a hard spot to a normal spot, over eighty percent of the injuries occur within those margins around the edges. So again, regardless of the surface that we choose, the maintenance piece, and that's really what keeps this up, is really, really important, okay? So qualitative, right? So let's look at two different systems of natural grass versus synthetic, and I would think that we'd all say that this quality of this field is pretty poor, right? Now, this is one, if we were to look at that Venn diagram again, usage off the charts, maintenance lacking, and expectations were kind of really flat in the pan, because really nobody said, it didn't need anything, which is sort of, well, it's either good or it's bad, we don't know. And so this was an interesting case study in how, you know, setting the quality standard of what we want to go for and how we want to maintain it, and doing so with the end in mind, right? How are we going to maintain it? How are we going to support from administrative level? How are we going to program it? So that's that field flipped around in your lake, right? Okay? Same thing here. So synthetic field that a district had, complete regime change, right, in terms of leadership, athletics, everything kind of changed. And the skill was eight, going on nine years old, so it hadn't even reached its ten birthday yet when it should have been replaced. Very poor maintenance, many safety practices, right? So again, that mindset that's got to permeate through that entire group, right, is really, really important. So on this side of things, hook it around, and you've got that, okay? So, again, building new is great, and that's where you guys are at. You're in a really, really advantageous spot to take something that's been there for a long time, transform it, but what it becomes and how it stays that way for a long, long time, so it's worth it, that's important. So, what we did here, from a qualitative perspective, this is a SWOT analysis, right? So in the business world, very common thing to do. It's a really easy, and quite honestly, when things are this clear, I would say from a information gathering standpoint, this is what we'll do, it takes more effort, more time, and different ways, we'll use different methods, but this, in this particular case, was our best, because we can really look down the list, the ledger of each of these groups and kind of talk about, from a maintenance perspective, what it means and why it matters. Same thing for athletics, same thing for administrations, same thing for the community, okay? So from a strength standpoint, we have a really skilled maintenance team here. Chuck and his, and his guys are doing an incredible job, and I, again, even though he's here on vacation, I'll give him props for that. But no, I think, you know, the thing that we, that came across in the, you know, ninety or so minutes that we spent with them, is that they put a ton of time and effort into taking care of that field, right? And there's a lot of stress that's involved in taking care of that field, and there's a lot of pride, too. And I think one of the things we'll talk about with his team is, you know, what happens from here, like where did that all go and everything like that? Athletic department. The coaching staff really do respect one another. I think that felt very genuine. A lot of times you'll see a lot of lip service in those meetings, but I felt that was very true and genuine, they wanted to work together, and they kind of shared those goals of what they were after, which was developing the athlete, developing the experience of the athlete, and trying to take the most of that out of it. Administration, understand the challenge of providing inter-schoolastic and community athletics, right? So what's really interesting, and I'm sure everybody in this room probably already knows, is that there really is no community wrecked program or facilities here. And so, I would say that I can't think of another city that's this size, I think I actually have a future slide, but a city that's this size that supports the number of athletes that it does, both from an inter-schoolastic and community standpoint, at its own facilities. It's almost unprecedented. So, you can look at that, and it's not a precedent, it's a good thing or a bad thing, I don't know. We can talk more about that if we need to. From a community athletics perspective, what was really interesting, the number, the actual number was one thousand nine hundred and eighty-two. You have one thousand nine hundred and eighty-two kids below the ninth grade that play in youth athletics here. That's amazing. And it's, and it's something that I should, I think should not be lost on this group, because, again, that field out there is so important, but the double field's right, but that has to offset, and they have to kind of share time, okay? From a weakness standpoint, maintenance seeks additional ongoing training to support existing fields and upgrade the stadium and practices. So they're doing a lot of the right things. And one of the, I would say, fears, right, that they share is that, hey, if we go with synthetic, we go with natural grass, we need to make sure that we can maintain it. And they weren't saying that because they were scared, I think it's a bad word to use, I think it was more of, hey, like, we're going to be entrusted with something that's brand new, and we want to keep it nice, because that's what we do, keep things nice around here, we want to make sure we can do it the right way. So that was a, a, a big thing that we heard, a message that we heard. From the athletics department and coaching staff, so the practice fields need to be in better and safer condition, and we talked about some, I think football coach mentioned some injuries that had occurred on some of the fields out here, and, you know, as we went through that conversation about the stadium field being hurt and being able to, you know, if that was the case, right, if that was sort of the way that things went, how would they share time? And they had some really good ideas, but the ultimate thing that came back to is that, yeah, we can use that, and that's going to be an awesome tool if that's the case, and that's the way it plays out, but we still have all these other fields that we're going to have to, you know, at some point rotate to or be on, you know, at any given time. You know, one, one that was brought up multiple times and through multiple sessions was the field that's over here north of the school where the band practices and then common team football plays, too. And that field was mentioned a lot, and not in, you know, the greatest of ways, okay? So, again, I think there's opportunity there, it's not for, you know, cash donations or anything like that, it's more to say, hey, there are things, you know, that we can fix and we need to get better at. So, administration lacks capital resources to improve all fields across campuses at once, right? So, you know, there's that one, which is, you know, sort of present and, you know, in everybody's hearts and minds, but there's also all these other fields, right? And there's no way to get that all done in one shot, no way. So I think that's just an understanding that, hey, how do we look at this holistically and take care of what needs to be taken care of, first performance and priorities, right? Community athletes, one thing that we heard from them, and really all the groups, soccer, football, even baseball, talked about how they're essentially forced to modify their programming, even sometimes their numbers, because they have to account for inadequacy to the facilities, right? So we're all kind of, you know, you know, lose-lose there a little bit, where it turns into, hey, we're doing the best we can with facilities, but we also have to modify our program. All right, so from an opportunity standpoint, so empowering to be more efficient for proper field setup and equipment, so, you know, I think that there, as we walked through that situation, we talked about, you know, what transpires with the game fields, you know, common stadium, and all these other fields, you know, a couple of things that came up were, hey, how would we be more efficient? You know, they asked that question, that came up, is, we're already doing, putting in maximum number, but is there something that we can do that would make it, you know, more efficient? And I've mentioned a robot painter, there's other things, right, but I think there's low-hanging fruit there to help that team, you know, get more out of their days and everything like that. Again, not because they're doing a bad job, they're putting in a hundred, hundred percent, I can tell you that, just from seeing the facilities out here and hearing how they described it work, you can't fake what they were, what they're talking about. So athletics, you know, they have the opportunity with an improved field out here, right, to host practices, camps, games, tournaments, and events on safer, dependable fields, right? We haven't even talked about, you know, events outside of just the sports that actually use that field from a field perspective, but, you know, you think about an event like comic relays, you think about other things, right, that might be hosted, I think, I think the principal, uh, that you talked about, and he's not engaged in that one. But he talked about Special Olympics and some other, you know, outside events, right, that the school can bring into that facility, and especially with all the other improvements that are going to take place inside there, really activate that space. We use that verbal, activate that space, meaning that it can be used as much as it possibly can for whatever we need to use it for, all right? Community athletics, to have access to more practice and game time on improved fields. So, you know, we asked them in those groups, if you had your druthers, how would you use this, right? And, you know, it lined up very well in a very complimentary way to the inter-schoolastic use, right? So the times that they want to use it or really need to use it, school wouldn't be using it, right? So, I think that there's some validity there to, you know, a facility that's essentially busy almost seven days a week realistically, okay? So, so the current stadium, field maintenance can optimize this time and increase the stress. I mean, that's something that we heard from everybody, said, hey, we can make it look good, but it takes a lot of physical and mental energy to do that, right? And we want to, like, there's no problem in the way that that operates now, but that's just the way we do this, right? So, if that changes, how do we change it, okay? Athletics is limited by the type of use and how much they can program stadium, so heard that throughout that need, right? That we got to be off that field, we can't touch that field, we need to protect that field, and the right in the way that it's currently built, in the way that it's currently used, okay? Administration has to balance, you know, inter-schools, athletics needs closely followed by community athletics needs, right? So, if we've got needs from a solastic standpoint, and we are in shortchanging in some way our community, you know, to what end is that followed, right? We get ourselves in a situation where, basically, the priorities of who gets to use the field at what point, right? And I think we had a really good conversation, that kind of boils back up to that, but good, awesome conversation with Casey, he was on vacation when we came here, we met with him for, I think it was supposed to be an hour or two, he was still on vacation, we talked for about two hours, and he had a lot, a lot of really good things to share and talk about, you know, some of the challenges. He was honest in saying, hey, you know, if we do this now with gyms where we share time, and if we make things work, it's like I feel confident that I'll be able to do that with the field, but I also don't know what I don't know, so tell me more, and then we kind of went back and forth and had some more conversations there. Community athletics, same eight concessions again, so their programs, their athletes to host games, right? So one of the things is that they haven't played a true home game, I think it was a period, they went four, it was either three or four years that they did not play a true home game, because couldn't bring people to play on the fields. All right, so again, we talked about those three key priorities, safety, playability as, as the study, so we kind of evaluate everything in a public, we look at the costs, we look at the qualitative side of things, right? And I think we can safely say that, you know, our recommendations are install synthetic turf in the stadium, if there's an absolute use case for it here, there's a time and a place for natural grass, we install one boat, we build a boat, we understand the needs that every community has for unique. From that standpoint, you know, looking at some of the other things of where that falls the dominoes, right, is that in practice fields, you know, there's some opportunities to improve those, increase maintenance resources, so all that time, effort, and pride that the team has right now, if they're taking care of, right, we're going to offset some of that, because we don't need to mow synthetic turf every day, right? There's still maintenance, there's still a good deal of maintenance that goes into that, especially with the amount of use that we're going to use the synthetic turf for out there, is that the maintenance and the usage are directly proportional, I mean, the more we use it, the more we have to maintain, right? That being said, there's still going to be a lot of free time that, you know, getting some of these other fields some enhanced maintenance, and, you know, some more opportunities for the guys to get out there, have time to take care of it the better way. Again, it's not their fault right now, it's, you know, an effort of, we're trying to make this look as best as we can. Longer, you know, playing up land use to maximize field use for both inter-schoolastic and community athletics, you know, we had some ideas about that, we kind of, I think it goes around with Casey at a high level, but I think that might be, you know, future discussion, future fodder to talk about of how to, you know, again, we talked about activating space, this one's easy, this is low-hanging fruit, but especially out here at HAH, like there's, I think there's ways to better utilize the land, right, to get more usage out of it, whether it's just passive use, kind of what you said, Mike, was, we don't have practice fields, we just have grass or there's some paint lines on it, I think is the affection way to put it. You know, so to get to that point where we're using them cohesively, and the priorities are there, too. And then lastly, it's like working with private entities to partner on capital improvement, so I think, you know, there's a lot to be said there, much of it doesn't need to be said right now, because that's not where we're at right now, but, again, I go back to the point that in a community of thirty thousand people that's supporting almost two thousand youth athletes with its own facilities, maintaining those facilities, improving those facilities, it doesn't happen elsewhere, not in Ohio. This doesn't happen. So, not saying that you should stop, I'm not saying that you quit doing what you're doing, you're doing a tremendous service to your community, it should be recognized, it should be applauded, but then the question is, okay, low-hanging fruit, put that out of the way, then what's next, right? And that's not a question for only you to solve, at least in our explanation of how we see the landscape and the fabric of other communities, and how they support community athletics, right, and inter-schoolastic athletics, okay? So the key anyways, capital budget, you know, we don't support the level of usage for the stadium and practice fields that they receive, right? So, we've got to start with the low-hanging fruit, which is the stadium field, right? We need to support a vastly increased amount of usage out here, with safer conditions, more complimentary to our maintenance routine, what we need to do, okay? The district supports community athletics in an unprecedented way, as I just said, and the best approach, right, is a phased one in overtime, starting with the highest impact improvement, which is common stadium, right? So there's a lot of dominos that can fall out of that, but right now, you're in the best possible position you can be, which is to take care of the highest priority that you possibly have, and then work from there. So, I'll kind of leave it there. With any questions, comments, concerns about what our findings were?
Yeah, I have a question. Your recommendations were true.
Yes.
What specifically is right?
From a usage standpoint, and I think, again, mostly because of the community piece and the inter-schoolastic piece, you push those two things together, do I think that there's a way that you could build a natural grass field and support that? I think you could, but that would come with a significantly higher cost, right, from a maintenance standpoint, right? So, and that's not just, hey, we need more fertilizer, we need more water, that is FTEs, that's people, they're going to be dedicated to that space and taking care of it at all times. There's some districts that do that, right? And they're not right, and you're not wrong to go either way, right? It's a community-based choice. My thing here, when we look at this, you know, and take this back to our team and talk about, you know, other scenarios and situations that we've seen, and again, with this being that unique scenario of not only do we support all nine through twelve sports, you know, and middle school sports, but we also support the community, right? That's a whole different animal. And I think that if we're going to look at budget dollars allocated, and we're going to look at everything else that needs to take place out here, it is, you have to take the biggest and first priority, which is that, and make that a non-issue going forward, right? Make that something that's predictable that you can work from and go forward from there. I think, again, if the choice and the will of the board is to explore a natural grass option, we can work down that path and understand a little bit more about cost impacts, but that delta that I showed of sixty-five thousand one seventy-nine, that's going to grow, right? So we're going to have a greater, or, excuse me, it's going to decrease, right, because we're going to have a greater, a greater cost on our natural grass side, okay? So, if that's the case, we can explore that, but I think from a synthetic turf standpoint out here, that is most likely the best scenario, right, going forward.
Well, I don't, I don't think we can accomplish, you might be better than me, I don't think we can accomplish what I'm hearing on grass with what you're saying. So, that figure you gave, what, the ten to twelve years?
Yes, sir.
On, on the field, is that factoring in ten to twelve for a turf? Yeah, artificial turf and fifteen for grass, right?
Yes, sir.
So with everything that you're factoring in, that we use that field for on the turf side, does that still get us properly maintained, does that still get us to the twelve?
Yeah, no, I think if it's, if it's maintained, like what I gave you was ten with regular maintenance, meaning that we're doing it at the minimum levels that are prescribed by the manufacturer. To your point, right, with the increased usage, we're gonna have maintenance levels that rise over and above that, right? So with that being said, and assuming it's used properly and everything like that, I would say if we can get to that twelve, if we're at that increased maintenance level. So from an FTE standpoint, that doesn't cost us anything more because on an operational side, I can't remember the exact number for labor, but I think on our, and we'll, when we share a report, we'll have a breakdown, it's right with all these categories. But on the labor side, that number was roughly five or six thousand dollars a year in terms of just the labor savings, okay? On the, on the synthetic turf, yeah. Now, the difference right between these two and why you see synthetic turf outpaced out of the cost side is that it's extremely capital heavy, right, in terms of its cost, right? Because not only is the initial install much more expensive, but then the replacements are much more expensive too, okay? Whereas grass, you know, the, the capital investment to install, replace, much lower, but the increase in operating cost is where that starts to balance out. So you're never gonna, you would be in a situation where you have to, um, use turf so much. I think we only encountered, we've never encountered on a rectangle field, on a like football soccer field, but baseball only is where we've seen that number net out at zero. And those are places that are playing like thousands, literally thousands or so. Yeah, six games a day, tournament facility, stuff like that.
Hey, do we, do we, are we driving the cost down because with turf? Because we're able to use it more versus the grass that we can't use it more? So I know the cost is higher indeed, but we're using it for like bigger, ten times more than with the grass. With grass, you know, we're, we're lower cost going in, but we're using it five times because of weather and everything that would prevent us from using that. So if you look at the initial cost going into it versus grass, at, at, at what point are we further ahead because we're getting more out? I don't, I don't think we can.
Yeah, you're just, you're, you're, you're basically kind of painting a picture of what I just said where, you know, again, on that baseball side, you're playing that many more games, you can average out the cost per use, right? Down to almost negligible between the two. In this case, I don't know, you might get there, right? If I, if we really looked at the alternative programming, like we were just looking at a specific on-field use by school practice teams, youth sports teams, community sports teams, right? That type of thing. If we look at, you know, what does it mean to have power relays out there on a new natural grass field? What kind of protective measures do we need to take? What type of repair costs? And I'm not trying to paint the picture to sway it one way or the other. Like, I'll go right down the middle on this and we can talk about any aspect of it. I think what the point here is though, is that for all the other facilities too that we look at within that space, right? So having concessions, having restaurants, having lights, right, having bleachers, those are assets, right? What did the district, that if we can't use that facility to sit idle? So especially if we take a project like this, right, including scope, new bleachers, lights, all that kind of stuff, right? But then at some point getting phased in, and we're not able to utilize that space, activate that space as much as we could, we've done the best that we can, right? And again, I think from a grass standpoint, I'd also look at it like this. Um, from a practice standpoint, right? We're on that field from a practice standpoint, seventy to eighty percent of our week, right? I'd rather see kids practicing on grass and then playing on whichever surface the district chooses, right? Because ultimately, even if they practice one or two days and they get themselves comfortable and acclimated to that surface, especially soccer, before they have a match on it, something like that, that's fine. But grass is easier in your body, even your football coach said himself, he's like, I love running out here on the grass, you know, it's opposed to liquid. He's like, my body feels a lot better, but that's a practice thing. So I think that's the opportunity with grass here is how do we improve overall holistically outside of just that field? Improve the grass experience.
Question. So, um, when you were, and Mr. Chuck probably broke down on the seat, when you were talking with the maintenance, maintenance focus group, um, you were saying they had some concerns about, you know, maintenance of the turf. What exactly were the concerns? Is it the staffing, like just pure?
No, they, they, they just never, they just never touched the artificial turf.
Oh, just the, no?
They, they were just emphasizing, I hope that if we go this route, that we'll be trained properly.
Yeah, and I feel.
Not numbers.
Right, right. No, and, and what we kind of talked about in there is that any of the, the major manufacturers provide kind of a superficial training. And I think what we see and we kind of offered up to them, you know, some other professional development opportunities where it's gonna be an ongoing process and just like anything, you know, I can put that on a slide projector and, or a PowerPoint and say, hey, look for this and then do that. It's another thing to be out there and then take the picture and send it to somebody like us, whoever, and say, seeing this, and I don't know what to do. What should I do, right? So that on-the-job training, I think that'll be a component of what ends up happening, if that, if that's the route we should go.
Can I ask what groups in that way?
Yeah, each of those four that were listed here.
Just those four?
Yeah, just those four. So, and then within the community athletics, so, uh, the football group, soccer group, um, Amherst Athletic Association, baseball, uh, booster, booster club and quarterback club.
Who was the community support group?
Oh, that, those, those were the, yeah, yeah, from a community standpoint, just the folks that would use the field actually, yeah.
Does the current condition of the field that we have, I know we have to strip it off and start over, but does that help us in any way or hurt us in any way?
Did the current condition insofar as what, sorry?
Just, just.
How it is right now, like what is, so we talked, we talked a little bit about that. I mean, I think there's some instruction considerations, um, to think about out there, how the field will fit in. Um, is it gonna affect anything? And the biggest thing right now is that the crown on that field is pretty massive, which means there's gonna be a lot of dirt to take out, more so than a typical high school field that was built last twenty years. So, you know, that adds to cost a little bit. Uh, I think there's some creative things that could be done to offset some of those costs, right? With respect for that. The other thing too is, uh, so in the athletics section, uh, the soccer coaches brought up, got a point of, hey, we want to make sure that we have sufficient width on the field to be able to host term of soccer games. And I think, is Casey, I think it was Casey, but he sent an email, he actually emailed Kbarnet, the HSA soccer administrator, to get that information, which it was, what he says, one ninety-five or whatever. So, um, those would be things, right, that we would look at in terms of, you know, orientation, things like that. But as far as the current condition of the field, how it is right now, everything like that, there's nothing out there that concerns me about, you know, either going with natural grass.
Was the track setup as it is now, do we have room to get one?
Yeah, we talked a lot about that, that was brought up in our first meeting and it came up in every subsequent meeting, even though our track, the track's not necessarily in our purview, we have quite a bit of experience with it. Chris Bowlen, our GPD was here and offered some, you know, guidance and support with that too. So, you know, the footprint of the field is pretty landlocked, right? You know, school building, neighborhood, big ball off, and then session stand. It's, it kind of is what it is. So the track that you currently have is considered old school. And what I mean by that is that it's got hundred meter straightaways and hundred meter turns. What that means is that in those hundred meter turns, the radius of that turn is really tight. So especially if you're running like four hundred sprint, like you are angling your body to run around that. Whereas on a modern track, right, you could kind of bend and straighten yourself up as you go around those turns. So, um, from a competitive advantage standpoint, I don't know that that offers any more or less, right? It's just different, okay? Uh, just like a baseball field has different dimensions, softball field has different dimensions, you know, wherever you go. Track's still four hundred meters, right, so they're on the race. There's some things about finish lines and stuff like that. I think that's where, you know, GPD kind of provides some good guidance on that. I think from a field perspective, to get that width, uh, there might be some slight adjustments that can be made. And then moving some of the events on the field if possible.
So, so you're saying that we'll be the wider for soccer? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes. I thought soccer was easier to get in.
So, so soccer is open to using it? And I think, then I think they both want to use their grass and their turf, it depends. Again, I think they want to see how it turns out, they want to see, because the soccer coaches, we met, we met all the coaches today, actually, GPD, you know, personally. Um, you know, Brett Thompson, the coaches say, you know, the kids want, the kids want to play on, on the turf. They like, they like that turf. Um, but we would like with our grass field. And the coaches like with the grass field that have, you know, more play area. So I think, I think the coaches, um, I think they're still doing both. They, they, they would like to practice on turf because we play on turf. They also like to have some of their home games on the grass, but we have it now. Uh, but if there was a game they wanted to maybe have on the turf here, they would have. Um, so.
I just, my, my first thought is, and this is backwards or the other.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we spend a lot of money on that soccer field over there and the, Cherkwinarsky worked really hard to get the funds for the lighting over there and I would hate not to use it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. And it's, it's, I was gonna say, and again, from the very beginning, like you said, doesn't matter to me. So it's always been, you know, what, what, what fortunate kid would program? So right now, as it stands, yeah, I, I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, we can take all our soccer games over here. They don't pay my price on the turf.
Maybe a senior, senior game?
Exactly, yes, yeah. That's exactly what they said, was that maybe a big game, maybe a tournament game, like, but they would prefer to just be a major.
Look, I heard, I mean, the practice field over here, I mean, shall keep answering. Um, is there any, is there any thought? I mean, I, I heard it's horrible over there, so, I mean, are we gonna build this field and, and do a hundred percent of practice and games there? Or are we gonna kind of put some money over here to help get this in, in some kind of condition they can practice?
Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's what I'm saying is that, you know, it's, you know, kind of, it is what it is, it works. Well, it kind, kind of, kind of does, there, there are safety factors on, it's true, right? Um, for use football for everything. So I think Ryan, you brought the light, this kind of issue of, you know, this, this change can, can release a valve of safety and playability a lot. Yes, but we still have issues out here. And, and so, and Orion, um, has shown me a few things, and we can talk a little on that too, about, we can talk about, if you want, if you want to talk about future things too, because, um, I think there's probably a solution that you know that you brought up.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Yeah, I looked at, so there might be, there might be multi-use thing, you do one thing where you can have safe football practice here and, and you go with Ryan.
So, right, before you start, Ryan, let me, let me chime in. Sure. So the way I look at things, we were never able to actually go and wipe that field out and plant it in grass, because we were gonna plow it in, because it's very rippled. It's right behind the varsity baseball. Because we, there was, because we would create ourself, there's no place to practice. So they just dealt with it. So as long as I've been here, seven years now, never really addressed that, because there's no place to practice. It takes two years to plant grass unless we dump the money in, in turf, uh, sod. So the way I look at things, if we happen to go with turf on our common stadium, we'll take the irrigation, all that system out and then we'll be able to enhance the practice with irrigation and some drainage and properly bring that field up to grade. And yet we take two years of work, but we'll have a nice practice field. And in that two years, they can stay, they can practice over there, uh, at the new field. So that's, that's my vision.
That's kind of like what I'm saying, you know, that we would, you have those resources to work on that.
Yeah, and there's, there's some validity to that, and I think that there's definitely, you know, some savings you can realize, you know, and it depends on which component of the field and everything like that. Uh, you know, holistically, so just back up, you know, our job was, was here, was here to look at this field, but like, that's just not, like, we, we can't just look at that because that's not how we build a solution and a consensus, right? So that's not to say though, that, uh, hey, we can wave a badge of wand, like, that's not the way it works. So I think over here, uh, this, from a land use standpoint, is your biggest commodity, right? In terms of space and open space that you have, that you can use, again, not only for interscholastic, but also for the community and figure out that half forward, right? So there are, again, I think low hanging fruit solutions out here. Chuck mentioned a really easy one to kind of get started with is, um, you know, improving the, the main varsity practice football field, right? Looking at what resources, you know, to, uh, I would say moderate to, to a low level, right? We can't go in there and build a top half practice, so this isn't real. But, um, we want to have something that's safe, right, but again, things with Chuck's here. But I think there's other ways to kind of reimagine that space moving forward that you can, again, have a multi-use space that you have soccer training, tennis training on one side of it, baseball game on the other, right? Multi-purpose and not necessarily in the same configuration the way that it is right now. So we'll flush a little bit more of that out, we just kind of share some sketches and move, move down through that and then leave it there. But, um, I think from this particular facility standpoint, proximity to, you know, Marionville Steel and everything, there's a lot of benefit here. We have about part to do, like, there's a parking issues. Everybody said we're not, I just slammed the ones to be, well, sure. Right?
Should you have put in the shoe part?
Shoe?
Do you have to see the shoe part for you? That's just a big deal.
Where is that? No, it's out, no.
Or it's, it's like even a possibility to make it a practice for some kind. And it would happen conveniently to the school, they can't like, you, you got change in here and walk over there. Just a parking.
Yeah, you have a five on the ground.
Yeah. Either way, if we have space to use, then the neighbors will have to just have to practice in there. Because I agree, but the issue is we don't have space, we need to have space.
No, you're fine, no, and I, I think like I said, I think there's opportunities bound over here to try to get that space sorted. And, you know, realize, I guess, I need to save.
Wait, do we do anything on the towers property here? Do we, do we maybe practice over there? I, I'm just. But I guess they're fairly.
Gotta go, I'll see you.
Do your vacation.
You're fine, thank you.
The last few hours of your vacation.
Yeah.
Oh, you're so.
Good to see you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Yeah, I had two, I had two things, um, so, yeah, Ryan, you're, you're wrapping up this feasibility study.
Yes.
Were you still able to kind of touch base with GPD and share this and work with them a little, just a little back? Get out of that conversation? Just share the information, go over some of these things?
Yeah, we could go wrap up meeting with that.
Okay.
Again, there's, you know, the opportunity to continue, we will, we see, but this engagement, right? How could we kind of close this one out then?
And real quick, Ryan, should take just a moment to share, you know, your background as far, you're talking about a little bit, but, you know, it's not like you're coming from a turf company or a grass company, like, if you, you, you're coming, actually, a lot of your work is a part of your company, was with parks and recs and cities, correct? So if you talk about that a little bit, like your experience with parks and recs is what, what your background is, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, I started my career, um, in the golf course world, so I got to see all the high-end stuff, Putzy Groundler and all that kind of stuff. And then I moved into community recreational parks. So my previous role prior to starting this company, um, six years ago, was that I managed all the indoor and outdoor athletic spaces for closed recreational parks. So we had, from a community standpoint, over two hundred and forty parks, but, uh, thirty-four of those were designated as sports parks. And within the sports parks, we would serve about one and a half, one point six million people every year across, right, sports and more outdoor. So from a capital planning, capital project execution, operating, maintenance, hiring, all that type of thing, right? We had to make that all work, right? And so, uh, a lot of what this company was born out of is that we saw a lot of projects that were maybe not the most well-conceived, right? Poorly scoped or didn't take into account like all the variables that might go into it. Um, didn't have the right budget to support the outcomes they were going for, or pay money. If you had just done this first, right, and then done that, we would have had money better spent, we would have done that, right? So from the community side of things, um, I worked my way up from that maintenance side up through the administration. So, um, you know, at the end there, again, serving all the programming, serving all the maintenance needs, and all the politics that go along with working with a city that has ten thousand employees and five hundred fifty thousand employees. A lot of constituencies, a lot of voices. And so, you know, that's kind of why this pulled on my first things a little bit, because that there's this community. It was really, really cool and again, not the slow smoke, but everybody was so passionate in the community athletics. Everybody really wanted all the same things. And that's, they, they all said it, like, I said, is this sport gonna fight with this sport? And I asked them, pointed at them, like, soccer, you gonna fight with team? And they said, we're just here to raise Thomas. That's it, you know? So when I, when I hear that kind of mentality, and I see the group of people that are here, there's kind of this, you know, conviction of believe, hey, like, let's see this thing through and make sure that this part gets done, right? And then whatever happens next, that there's, see the table at school, because again, you're doing enormous service to the community. Most of it probably don't recognize, definitely underfunded, um, and, and shake their head. But, but to that end, right, that doesn't mean it has to be that way forever. And so I think there's ways to continue to partner and everything like that. But what's in front of you right now is improving common stadium, right? That's a big task, a big to do in this community and see how much this means to everybody, uh, that sits in this room. And so, uh, from our point of view, we just want to make sure that it gets done right, and this is our first step. We'll get GPD a couple of speed. And my last question, I'd make a, just a question.
You're gonna be the last one?
Okay, let's make, make a bold sound. You know, you highlighted a few things here, and as I super tense look around, you know, Avon, you put it. Okay, let's make, make a bold comment, you know, you, you highlighted a few things here, and as I, the super tent look around, you know, Avon, you put it in second turf field. The city day might help with a second turf field for, for their community and the school district, and I know here is where right now, city and schools are trying to do a project, and Wolfbridge, of course, and all their. Three attempts on everything they've done with this work with the city, so, um, the desire is there to work with the city, but as you, as you mentioned, you've seen, and everyone knows, you know. We, we may have, we're lacking some things, so I question you with your background, parks and rec, and what you've done here with this feasibility study. Uh, do you do feasibility studies for a situation like ours, where possibly if there was a community group, there was a desire, the school district and city would work together? Again, just to research options, opportunities, what, what land does a school have, what land does a city have? What would the cost be for running this kind of program, that kind of program? I mean, we're running programs right now with volunteers and organizations and a great group of dads and moms, right? Right, so, so we're already running them.
Hmm.
So we already kind of probably know what the costs kind of are for, for, for the, the fields and plots of lands we give.
Sure.
And the t-shirts and the backs, and so, I, I'm just, I'm just curious, do you do feasibility studies to help communities? Or could you help us possibly if that was something we were interested in, both school district and city, to, to possibly do to help us out, take a look at what, what could be? I just asked.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's a good question, and I think that, you know, that we do that in the sense that, you know, there's really some parts there that are really kind of. Propundary to what we're doing here, right, in a much broader scale. Inventory of what we have and what we do and what it costs, which Amy was gracious and said, I'm still holding to that, she'll give me whatever information she needs, and she's like, you can look over the spreadsheets, you can pour up the numbers. I'll bring my slide rule up, we'll do math, it'll be fine.
Slide rule, nice.
Sure. I want, and I have an old one from my grandpa, it's a little round case, it's really cool, actually, so.
You have to know how to use it.
Um, seventy-five percent of the way there, I gotta get brushed up, you too. So, um, I think from that standpoint though, it's, uh, you know, the inventory of what we have, how we use it, what we pay for and everything like that, and then sort of. We have to have some sort of vision, right, so building that vision of what it's going to be, and how we get there, and then what are the paths to actually doing that and executing that vision? So that starts with priorities, that goes to the path and milestones we need to hit to get there, and then. Findings is, right, many of those types of things, so, you know, the, the interesting thing about the division between schools and cities or political subdivisions in Ohio is that. They have access to a much greater supply of money than you ever will to school from a grant and state funding standpoint, which is wild, but it's the way it works. So there have been some creative partnerships over the years, you know, where there's been, um, you know, sort of a partnership between two entities, right? School, community, I mean, we've even seen some where there's been a partnership with the private side to kind of help bolster that, so. Again, from the community aspect, I think there's definitely ways to bring all the effort, you know, that's kind of what I, what we felt collectively as we drove back, uh, we had a discussion here. Jay Garcia and I that came up was that, I mean, there's a lot of people working really hard, and if they all were rowing in the same direction, not that you're not, but like in the same boat. You'd get a heck of a lot thrown at you, a hundred block pass, so, yeah, we'd love to help obviously. That was my last question, I'll say my questions.
Question, um, I just wanna say thanks for taking the time, you know, putting all this stuff together, and I really appreciate, I think we all do, in a sense that. You know, we didn't come here with an agenda to push turf or to push grass, we came here with an agenda, what's best for this community. And to that, I appreciate that, because, you know, we have a lot of things to discuss, from what we wanna do and how we wanna do it, but your information really helped. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome, and thank you for inviting me and your community and inviting our company, and that's what we do every day, we take a lot of pride and passion what we do, so, you know, we're here to help, everything's okay. And thank you, thank you all so much.
Appreciate it.
I should just, yeah, you need that. But I almost folded up thinking, I didn't even realize it was mine.
You guys' back, is it correct?
Great, thank you too.
You got Mike?
Yeah, you got it, okay.
Morgan, you got, you have four inspections.
Just keep it.
I was like, why?
Yeah, so the virtual committee met in the end of May, and I just wanted to like, grab them for a minute, because it was so great, the presentation was awesome. Uh, so Beshwars and Amanda's here, and now we lost Edward, and I, I've been having a ball, and I met initially, and then they met separately, um, but just talking specifically about like all the PD days that you guys have set up. And I did help everybody know that, um, our coaches are all fully, I don't know, professors and all the people with their teaching, like, our staff, the faculty are like giving out, just for that. So, um, I just thought that was great, and then they were kind of saying that other districts, you know, some of them aren't really to be run above, or you, or they had a, um, have like come in and like, they were so impressed with the way that like. The district, I mean, the PDs asked, like, even shadow, I believe, come in and ask if you can go there, and like, that, but, you know, so, um, they're not many, so they, if you want to go. Yeah, and just talking about like, I guess that's the same thing, staff meetings where you're kind of getting everyone together and even saying, or I believe that they were saying, that they hope. Focus on what they want to focus on, so everyone's like, okay, and if you wanna learn about that, if you tell the coaches, they will find that out and have a staff meeting about it. Um, the next thing, yeah, to them, um, that they're all edge of professors, and so everyone's giving their hours, and the next one, I think, to show the hours, but all these, that our faculty is giving. All these college credits, just from participating in PD days in our building, with other people teaching there, and just about that, like, very interesting. They said a lot of other things, but they already said a lot, so let's just keep my.
Well, the great part about that is I'm glad they're doing that so well, but that it's harder to what we and our kids and staff need, you know? I didn't want to get college scores or do some hours somewhere, do a workshop, but, um, but every time they do something, then whatever they've been teaching to work on, they go into their classroom to work on. Use it, and they come back the next session and say, how, it was how it worked, you know what I mean?
So it's actually helping our kids, you know?
And they talked a lot about like co-teaching, and exactly that, and how they're like co-teaching across all buildings, and, um, and then they also do grant writing and. Run some extracurriculars, um, and then the other thing that I always thought was classroom connection, where teachers can observe other classrooms, which is something that. I think I heard something at Calipr, it's actually, you're talking about like, where you like swap classrooms per day, or something, which I don't know how realistic that is, but, um. But just you can go in and see another teacher teaching, because even if you've been doing this for decades. Seeing someone new doing it by giving some ideas or something to like incorporate in your classroom, so, I was just very impressed with that, but I agree. That's it.
That's it? That, you need the YouTube. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you, and we are very awesome, we're impressed with it, again, if I had to, we have a conference to speak. And things that they, um, you know, teach our teachers about, and things like that, and they're one of all the leaders, and so. Definitely our district is the leader in, uh, this, in a discussion, so, um, so it's really, so, they're awesome. Um, next slide, oh, yeah, so for house activity, um, we have House Bill three fifty-six, um, overall that, but that is the Healthy Cardiac Monitoring Act. So, um, they are looking to make changes to the cardiac monitoring health, hopefully it's for, um, youth and schools. So we'll keep an eye on that, um, House Bill five sixteen, um, they just heard some recent sponsor testimony, and this is a bill that. Um, annually would require the Director of the Ohio Office of Budget and Management to transfer funds to the State Board of Education for licensure. Great, so, um, they're gonna leave some funds for teachers, license and things like that. House Bill five sixty-nine, um, recently heard sponsor testimony, one of the sponsors is our very own, Mr. Joseph Moore. Um, the bill would reinstate the joint education oversight committee, next slide please. More house activities, so House Bill thirty was, um, being announced, we knew this would be passed, um, so this bill would designate a portion of Interstate seventy. And making coming as the Tescuara's Valley, um, Heart Bay, um, House Bill forty-seven. The Senate Education Committee just held a, um, hearing on this, and it involves teacher licensure verification, hiring practices. Things of that nature, the next one is the, um, what they're calling the news and around the country, um, this would pass in other states, like California. Um, House Bill one seventy-eight, or the Crown Act, um, that passed through the House and it's going into the Senate, so that'd be interesting to see what they do with that. Um, this bill would prohibit public schools and public preschools from discriminating against students due to, um, traits from their, um, associated with student's race. And then what their hair texture and their hairstyles, things like that. House Bill five eighty-five, um, the bill provides, um, three hundred thousand, um, to the Ohio Department of Agriculture for pilot who kind of break programs. And these funds will be provided to middle schools, high schools, um, and higher education institutions for, um, provisions of special religious diets. Including kosher and halal. Next slide, please. Okay, let's see, um, so this deals with, uh, so this is Senate activities, so Senate Bill one oh four, college credit plus program. Um, let's say it changes, um, with this program, um, right now they're looking at, um. Some notification advice that students and parents can give regarding this, and let's see, using, um, not changing up, so students, I guess they've had. Issues with, um, students modifying some of the forms that they use to apply to certain programs for CCP and, um, their. Oh, so Chancellor of Ha- Higher Education, they're requiring them to use an alternative credentialing process. To certify some instructor, instructors for CCP and, um, collecting cost data, I guess they're looking at justifying some of these CCP programs. And submitting these to the state, so that would be interesting to see what they do with all of that. Um, Senate Bill one twelve was recently passed, um, in the Senate, it was gonna move over to the House and just recently. Looked at by the House Commerce and Labor Committee, um, and this bill will require school buildings to comply with national. Black safety standards, and two bills, um, coming up that came into the past two weeks. Um, Senate Bill two ninety-two and its sister bill on House six twenty-nine, um, provide authorization and conditions. For certain program, capital programs, um, how it affects public schools, they're, um, looking to make capital and other appropriations, which include six hundred million. For construction and renovation paid to house school programs, and this will be, they're looking to boost, um, for the next budget. And funding to go in effect, um, ending, the by noon ending in June of twenty twenty-six. And the other bill, it's, it's interesting, so they're trying to have language, um, in Ohio, guys, code that would require school districts. To allow, um, loose time courses and religious instruction. Next slide, please, more Senate activity, um, Senate Bill one eighty-one. Um, the Education Committee heard sponsor testimony revealed, um, looking at, um, ticket prices, so they're trying to make sure that. I guess districts won't charge different prices for, um, tickets based on that opponent outside of processing fee for online and credit card purchases. Senate Bill two fifty-nine, um, another hearing was held on the bill that would make changes regarding participation. In interscholastic athletics, where students subjected to harassment, insubordination, bullying, or other offenses. And then the one in whole, um, Senator, um, Andrew Brunner, was the head of the Senate Education Committee. Um, gave sponsor testimony on Senate current resolution eleven, and so this resolution would urge Congress and the President of the United States. Along with the United States Department of Education to exclude sexual orientation and gender identity from Title IX. So we're all at, um, in the future, and then the pre, uh, whole confirmation, the Senate Education. Whole confirmation hearing and confirmed, um, the Senate confirmed Jeremy B. Brana recently to be the, um, Ohio Department of Education workforce. That could be Director of Career Technical Education workforce. And then the next slide shows some OSBA, um, trainings and webinars. The one that I have in yellow is in alignment with some of our strategic training that we talked about with, um, D E I incorporating that. And it would be in September, but there's other, um, three webinars coming up, as well as the Open House in September and December. And then the next slide, um, sorry for short notice, I just saw myself, but this Wednesday, there are two pretty. Interesting webinars, one, um, the Department of Education workforce is having one, um, Future of Ohio's workforce, um. So the special with the new, um, Mr. Brana, um, workforce name, I guess, it's hard to see, it's so small. And then, and then, uh, the same day they are having, I thought you think this is, this is interesting, this is, um, Esther funding, so. Now, now that the, um, they're kind of going away, um, navigating social workforce after COVID. Yeah, that's, I don't get it, I know the, um, community foundation may have, their leadership, um, rank having able to spread out in May, like this volunteer connect. Initiatives, so, the reason I'm bringing that up is they do have a section for, um, students, so if they need, um, you know, volunteer hours. For like, you know, books or, you know, graduation seals, honor societies, things like that, um, that can be there. Sign up for the opportunities, you know, like that, so, bring up email, so I can go out in August, so. So we need information, um, I believe that's about it, check the days.
Questions? Any questions for Mary? Any other questions or recommendations?
Yes, we have personal recommendations this evening, um, most of our, have been hired in contracts, some are worse, some are fresh to love, less than our teachers. Uh, I just wanna highlight items Q, who are, um, those are the substitute rates for that school year, and those are the same rates in the previous year, so we haven't changed those rates at all. So with that, I'd like to recommend personnel, items ten A through ten R.
Okay, Teresa, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Our book, please?
This is Gilbert, hi, Dr. Messer, and this is Juan, book to her, Mr. Zepa.
Hi. Educational recommendation?
Yes, for educational recommendations, I'd like to, uh, slip, slip up into two votes if possible, um, we're going to separate G. Out certainly for Dr. Messer, that's good, you can find it, so, like to, um. Recommend items eleven A through F and H through L first.
So, I know.
H through F and then H through L, which is.
Second?
Second.
Okay, how's it looking? When she gets, when she gets.
Who was my, who was my motion?
Teresa. Teresa, Morgan, the second.
Okay. And again, this is eleven A through F. And again, this is eleven A through F and eleven H through L, okay.
Comments, discussion? Call a vote.
Mrs. Gillis, I'm. Mrs. Watfield, I'm Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Zepha.
Aye.
Thank you.
Questions? Call a vote, please.
Uh Theresa Dallas, aye. Morgan Watfield. Dr. Messer.
His name. Mr. Zepha.
Aye.
This is recommendations, we just have uh six items that need recommendations. So recommend items twelve A and twelve F.
Teresa, second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment about E. I think it's a lot of money, I I totally agree that, you know, having to retreat, but go in as far away as you are in the money that you're spending. I think it's a lot. And I think too, um when we were talking about our retreat, I was told we couldn't go until August. Cause I did say I was available on the twelfth and then I went home and I realized it was a really hard day for me. Um you guys were gonna do the retreat without me, but we couldn't do June because of vacations and we couldn't do August. But yet this one's in August and you guys are going, you guys are spending a lot of money. Just, I'm concerned about spending this kind of money.
Administrators are not in the month of July. And and this is admin not board. Okay, I I just wanted you to understand that your prepared calendars do not include being in.
Um so just kind of back, you know, um we, this is the first time we've had an administrative retreat, all of our administrative. All of our administrative, it's not really a retreat, it's it's our administrative work session.
Which I think is great, I think it's.
So all of our administrative meetings, you know, are 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 in CLC or in the district, uh but just as we've done with the boards, our board retreat. We've done with administrative leadership team meetings over. Former respects and I mean, I I think it's 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 an environment where, you know, I think boards are interested as well, you know, trying to build culture and. Positive things and um you know, support our administrators, you know, what we've talked about in the last couple of months. So our life superintendent meetings, so our superintendent, right, one thing we have talked about is, as you know, the education is a difficult environment. Post post pandemic and uh. Yeah, it was hard, but you know, and a lot, not a lot, not a lot of young people are going to education, I mean. Young people are teaching extremely, but um that's a bit just a different nature of education, right? Same administration, a lot of, I guess, teachers without administration, going to administration, coming from super technical. So I think what what we've talked about recently is just, you know, we work so hard to. Work with the teachers and try to try, I mean, that's the people who tries to be stress free, stress free, um try to work with anxiety. Mental health and the lots of positive programs and things like that.
I know, I know.
So 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 that's so, but what we've talked about is there's there has to be, you know, who's there to support administrators? To keep the stress and anxiety off of teachers and community members and classified staff, so um I'm just making that comment, but that's. That's what you're whole sport, I mean, we do have twenty administrators, so that breaks down about four hundred dollars for the two days that lie people on there, so.
Does that, does that include all the boot too or does that was additional?
I don't check, save all the work I have.
Okay, so.
Well, I agree, like, it's for morale purposes that you have to do this, you want to do it in a year, but. And all of that, but also if it's or any of that, it cannot be in the overnight progress.
Um, oh, that's fine, um I did wanna mention though a little bit about the agenda, is that um we are doing the. Doctor, Dr. Henry, right, he's coming to the elementary. We are doing um an annual book study through cash flow credit this next year, uh for a brand. So I mean, we're, there's, there's a lot of work and and I agree, it probably. It probably could be closer, you know, I'm in charge here, so you count every penny, right, um but um. To get everybody in one spot with their mind and that spot. To be present, to be doing the work that we're doing, I think that serves a proper public purpose. I I mean, that's, you know me, I do question those things and um I do feel that. Um there is always leadership lessons to be learned when you're in an environment like that. Um we don't want to call it DEI necessarily, right, cultural humility, I think is is one um factor that refers to it. But there's a lot of work to do, there's a lot of work to do and we did really like the idea of to be behind the lake and he made. It doesn't have to cost the time to sit around the camp bender and and talk stories and tease and play hornhole and things like that, so. Um I I do think that it it serves a proper public purpose in this in this context and um we can evaluate it on a year basis, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
For for all, for the whole. These so it's real quick, do all the strategic plan, delivering Dr. Knight, um and this is, it's gonna be a multi-year thing. So we want to make sure that we we pre-buy in, we do it right from the ground, including the board. Administration, administrative leadership team, so we felt, we believe this year is gonna be focused on those core foundational groups, the board. Um just district leadership team, our administrative team, um he has the book, he's ready. Doing a second book study with those groups as well, and so um try to lay the foundation of of that work. Then following it, most likely be able to work with actually the staff in the building and in the unit. There'll be more, we'll do that, base coming in as well, it's just a matter of laying the foundation to continue the work after that, so. But that that's not all, we've totally worked out, phased out, we're gonna be meeting with Dr. Knight, board retreat, we'll be at top with him as well, so. We get to drive him for that, also, that's one of the topics of the board retreat.
Uh I also wanna wanna thank you, I don't know, I think it was, I'm not sure, but that, you know. The board retreat is closer and I appreciate that, closer in proximity there.
So, do we have a motion?
Yeah, why do you know?
Did you have a call for the vote?
Mrs. Gillis, aye, Dr. Messer, aye, Mrs. Watfield, aye, Mr. Zepha.
How about German?
I have a discussion for that.
Never. Hi, Mrs. Mrs. Gillis, aye, Mrs. Watfield, aye, Dr. Messer, aye, Mr. Zepha.
We are adjourned.